I understand this moratorium that we're working on.
We sent them.
Has been sent out. Yeah, what's, why are we sending with that? When do they expect to have it back to us?
I don't have any idea. I haven't talked to them.
Should I call?
No, I can just email them and see how far they've gotten. It'll be cheaper than us calling them.
And send out an email?
And then we have it writing and see where they're at. Absolutely. But I mean, I really have, you know, I'm trying to weigh both sides of that out and I have done a lot of thinking on that and thinking about the cost, the time it takes, the ordering the ballots separately, the whole thing in the process. I mean, it's a huge process. Because you really, and we talked in length about having that paper ballot to make sure everybody would have the option to vote on it and not just have a raise your hand and only have the few people come in that normally wouldn't come in. We talked about that quite a bit in planning, when we talked about it in meetings. And I still, you know, I-
And we can have a proper meeting where we send out, where we send out the absentee ballots and all that.
Yes. You gotta have the money.
That's the one I'm talking about that we could, that we could do as early as, I would, I would, giving the lawyers another couple of weeks, I would say probably the middle of February.
I would say I would stick with May. I'm thinking about my staff out front, the work they have to do. I'm thinking about the money and the budget. I'm thinking about the whole process. That's why-
The money happens to be in the budget.
For all of the, in the next election too?
For elections, yeah.
And there's enough there?
Yep. According to all the figures I discussed with the town clerk this morning, yes, there's enough for both of those. That pays everybody's wages and all that. So it's, this is just information. It's all public.
Yes.
So I, basically, as far as I can see at the present time, the thing that's holding things up is, will be the lawyers, and they do need time.
Well, they have the, the letter, the, you know, you wrote up, Paul, we sent that off to the lawyers to review and look at.
Yes. Is there a question in the audience?
Yes.
I mean, I understand the need for the moratorium on the social clubs and the retails because anybody can apply for one of those licenses. I mean, have you considered separating the cultivation side from that side for a moratorium so you can look at the cultivation side and see if there's a fit for Lebanon companies?
We have not. We haven't really been talked about. We were more concerned we'll get in the moratorium just so we can write up an ordinance after the fact. Have the moratorium in place and enter the ordinance for the fall election and that way we'd be ready to go, you know?
Ultimately, those cultivation sites are the ones that are bringing jobs and increasing taxes. It's not going to be the retail stores.
But it, we need to know if that's what the people want. I mean, really, I mean, there's differences of opinions. There's a lot of them.
Yep.
Exactly. We need to know what the people want.
Absolutely. Perfect. Good timing.
Good timing.
See, it comes down to a, to a question of how many voters this will reach too, as we all know. It's a matter of, the absentee ballots, that's, that's the people that can't get out to vote on that particular day.
Or work that day.
Or any other day. They need that chance to be able to vote. And we can do it as long as we hold a proper election.
Right. As early as February to protect ourselves.
Probably by the middle of February best.
There has to be an election. It can't be just like we did voting before a town meeting or whatever you call it.
A special town meeting?
Yeah.
It can be, but you're not going to get every, you won't, you won't get all the people out.
Okay.
That was the whole thing, why we wanted to run an election.
If it was an option, okay.
Because then, you know, a special town meeting, they have to come up and raise your hand and, you know, chances of-
You can't go to ballot though, can't you?
You can there.
Yes.
You can go by yes or no. Yes or no.
But what does that do for the people that vote absentee?
Right.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't, you'd have to be present.
That's quite a no.
That's your hand. You'd get 50, 75 people or maybe 100 and something like we did last time, which was great. That was a lot for us.
300, 400.
Yeah.
Absentee ballots.
But, I mean, again, you know, there's a lot of things at play. You'd have to get to school. You'd have to make sure the weather, whether you booked that, does not matter if we're having a blizzard, if you're going to have it in February, March.
If you could excuse me from the room for a moment, I think I can find out on the dates on the school, what's available for us.
Thank you, Royce.
I did ask this morning, but I haven't had a chance to talk to Dale and ask her what she come up with.
We should all be having that conversation together with Dale, if that's, you know, that's, I mean, go ahead. No, you can vote, I mean, in the future, we should be having that conversation, the three of us with her.
I will.
If this is what you're planning, because we had a workshop and we all agreed to do it in May.
Seven minutes.
And now we have a change of heart and you've had some-
It was seven min, it was only a seven-minute workshop and nobody could speak. So I don't see how that was a workshop.
I don't think that matters. We did agree, Royce was part of that.
Well, he disagreed, actually. He said no.
Not in that workshop, he didn't.
When you passed the street, when they cleaned out the door, I noticed that.
How much attention Paul pays them? He doesn't even know what we're voting for. While we're waiting, can I just ask you why you're so against the people voting on the moratorium? Which, I was going to ask you the other day, but you wouldn't allow anybody to speak. So I'm just curious why you're so dead set against people voting on a moratorium.
I'm not against people voting.
I mean, early, like, the planning board has asked and requested. I, I mean, I don't understand why you're going so far against the planning board who have done months and months and months of research on this.
I'm not against the planning board. I'm trying to do what I, what I believe is best, is sitting in the same timeframe that we have our regular election, costly-wise, timeframe-wise, you know, the whole nine yards.
But when they tell you that they've researched this and that it could cost us a lot of protection in this town, they have done the research and the work and they're sitting, a board that has been appointed by this town is telling you.
And I've done some research too.
But you're one person.
I'm trying to be against them and that's what you're going to say. And I'm not against the planning board and I know how hard they work and I appreciate everything that they do. That is just my opinion.
Right, your opinion.
Well, not my, it's what I believe is best for this town and financially and the whole process. I mean, you know, I'm thinking about the short staff out front, I'm thinking about the cross-training out front, I'm thinking about taxes being due in April, I'm thinking about the next election, we're going to have an election, I'm going to have taxes due and then have another election. You're going to roll right back to back. It's very dangerous. It's a lot of work. I've done it for years. You know, that's what I'm thinking about. I mean, that, that's why I said what I said and I'm going to stick with that.
I believe that town affairs should be done by-
No matter if it's going to cost this town dearly in tax payment. You're assuming it won't.
I feel that this would be, the town would be better served, the people, if it's in May. That's my feeling. That's it.
But what happens in May that makes it better than March?
Well, it's a school, it's the town election.
Uh-huh. Yes?
We're all set up for an election.
Right. We're still going to have that election. Right?
What can I say?
I don't know. What are you saying?
I like May.
You like May?
No.
I'm glad, Paul. I'm glad. I'm glad you like May.
May, may I see?
Yes.
So, oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
Mine's, mine's short. I did check with Dale, ask our town clerk, and she said that what, the information she got from the school is that in February, there seems to be some open dates around the time we might possibly do. It looks good. Get that important.
And I'm just going to say something right now. Okay, so, our current budget for elections, let me just look at this little, even go all the way down to the bottom. The current budget for elections was 7,200. We've already spent almost 2,700, 2,772, so we have 40, 4,428 still left to do the May election also. Now, that must include several ballots. I mean, her ballots alone are probably going to be $2,000, $3,000, not including-
That's not the figure I heard this morning.
I have it right here. That was dated 12/15.
12/15, okay.
So that's my concern.
I'll double-check it. Sorry, I'll double-check it. I'm giving you wrong answers.
And I'm not, I'm just, I'm trying to take the whole big picture into consideration and I know how everybody feels and I don't want to jump to them, but I truly believe in talking to, you know, I've talked to my town administrator that I've worked for and not has anything to do with you.
Right, nothing to do with us.
But, you know, they-
Nothing to do with us.
No, it doesn't. But they do have a good insight on what, how, you know, to handle that and, and they truly believe in, and I've talked to a couple of other people, that they're not going to be ready, the state's not going to be fully ready until after that fact, until the fall. So if we do it in May and hopefully, you know, it'll pass if we get it out there and get it out there correctly, then I, I believe that we'll be okay. I truly do. I mean, I know it's a, it's a-
It's a crapshoot.
Yeah, it is.
And you're willing to roll those dice.
Well, I don't really, you know, I've got to look at the whole big picture and that's really how I feel about it.
Christine, you know, the state is behind. You're right.
Way behind the, way behind.
Yes, I have actually prepared something because I'm not entirely confident that I'll be able to get all of my thoughts, you know, collected if I was just speaking freely. But, so, this first came down in September, as we all know, and that's when the first proposed business came in to speak with both the select board and the planning board. The select board first, planning board second. So, you were addressed, let me see, that I actually have. So, I would like to state for the record that I am extremely frustrated, extremely frustrated. The planning board has been working tirelessly on control measures for recreational marijuana establishments. We have spent hours, hours, discussing the subject in open meetings and even in our personal lives. We have been thoughtfully considering all facets, just as you have, all facets of this legislation and have reached out to others for advice on the matter. We are in the process of holding informational meetings with residents of Lebanon to not only inform them of what question one means for our town, but to also gain insight into exactly what they would like to see recreational, how they would like to see recreational marijuana facilities controlled in the way that best suits us. We are, we are looking to work with the residents of the town of Lebanon to come up with an ordinance together. With that being said, I am frustrated with the fact that the select board has not shown even the slightest inclination towards being as conscientious. As stated earlier, you know, this was addressed in September. Even given the fact that the information came to the planning board, or even given that fact, the information came to the planning board from the Lebanon CEO, Mike Bolio. And as soon as the information regarding the potential for recreational marijuana establishments opening here in Lebanon has, was made known to us, the gears started running and we started working. Honestly, I'm offended that the same thing did not happen from the select board. I really am. I'm deeply offended by that. In fact, I don't feel that it would have even been discussed, or that it would have even been discussed as it has not been on your agenda at all, had it not been for Sean Bright coming into the meetings and addressing you guys under other business. This, of course, is with the exception of the workshop that you guys held last week, of which, I must say, I was also offended by. I can't understand how the select board can come to a well-thought decision in a mere six minutes on adopting a moratorium without any discussion at all about the other options. Had you held a discussion, you may have come to the realization that holding a special town meeting with a paper ballot, hand-counted at the end of the night, would not only enable us to adopt the moratorium sooner, as soon as February, but it would have also been cost-effective, about $2,000, a little less than $2,000. Given the fact that we have a special budget for elections, I would think that it is in there to, to hold a special election for this. Now, you guys might be right in saying that we have enough time and that it might not come down before then, absolutely. But if we were to have a moratorium in place, it would also deter, you know, the building that's happening right now in town. Because it's coming and it's coming quick. Their proposals are already in and they're already talking. And I just implore, what would happen if it didn't pass in May? So, would we have to hold a special election anyway?
Yeah, you tell me. How come such a discrepancy?
Now, basically what I'm asking is that you guys start doing your due diligence and that means open communication, that means discussing it in your meetings, that means, you know, having really, really thorough research. This is honestly the only way that we're going to come to common ground and tackle this very, very impactful legislation. Know that it's certainly not my intention to offend, not at all. Rather that I simply need to express my frustration about how the situation has been handled. My hope is that we can now come together, hit the ground running and do what's best for the town. And again, it's not my intention to be, to offend and thank you for letting me speak.
What do you have for a figure, Royce?
According to the report, I just printed off, or I had printed off on you, we started out with a $15,000, $15,991 budget, current budget on that-
For elections, yes.
-account, for elections.
Yep.
There was $39,9242 spent and that left a balance of $11,598.58.
And that's for everything overall. I mean, July night, you'll make sure you have enough for pay. If you, if you guys truly feel that you have enough and she wants to do that work, then let's do it.
Right.
If you truly feel that way and you truly feel that way, I mean, if you want to have a special town meeting, then let's, let's do it. I mean, but she's going to have to hand count ballots. I mean, they'll have to make the ballots, you'll have to make the whole thing and then hand count them, get the dates all set. I mean, if you truly feel that way and she feels that there's enough money in there, I'm concerned about June's election and have enough money still, even if you use that because you're still-
June's election.
May.
I mean, May's election.
We have an opinion.
And then you've got to, you may have a June election too. That's all that come out of this budget.
Why would we have a June election?
State, the state has one. The state pays for the ballots, but you still have to pay for your time and your people. But if you, if you feel that that's going to happen, I mean, I still agree-
I don't know. I'm just bringing out what the numbers are. That's not the same numbers that you gave.
Right, why is there such a huge difference?
Because I was looking at personnel, I was looking at payroll.
Oh, so that, that 7,244.28 that you said was for elections is not?
7,200, yeah, it's for elections payroll.
Uh-huh.
And they have 4,000 left.
And that's just for people?
That's for people, yep. Yep.
And if I might say too, I feel so strongly about this that I am absolutely willing to put the legwork in and go door-to-door and knock on doors and tell people, you know, hey, there's a special election going on, you know, come out and, you know, just openly discuss this with people that can't necessarily come down here. I am absolutely willing to volunteer my time at the special election. I'm absolutely willing to count paper ballots if I'm allowed to. I, I feel very passionately about this because it's going to impact our town for a long, long, long time, forever. It really is. And we got to get it in place, or not necessarily a moratorium, but we need to have enough time to, to come up with well-thought and thorough put ordinances that are going to work for everyone.
What's the matter, Paul? What's the matter?
Nothing. What?
All right, you just didn't look like you were feeling well.
He's thinking.
Thinking.
He's thinking, Paul.
It worries me to have one auction right after another auction. And I understand, I understand how you feel. I really do. Don't think I don't. And I, I do. It worries me. I mean, but if, if Royce and Dale have discussed it and Dale is comfortable with doing it, then I, you know, put it out to the people. I mean, I, I hate to do it and if they, they, you know, I think we're going to be cutting all of our money very, very close because we're going to have-
All I'm doing is making sure that we get the right figures out here to the public. That's all. People need to make their own choices, that's all. That's all I'm doing. What I believe in this is immaterial.
But we have to make a decision on what we dealt with it.
Right.
And we talked about the amount of-
And we need to keep our figures that we deal with, with the public pretty straight here as much as we can.
If you hold a special election with the ballot right there, the paper ballot, yes or no, and that's really all you really need is a yes or no question, is whether or not the town should enact a moratorium. You don't need anything further than that.
I personally disagree with that.
Really?
People need to, those people that need to do absentee ballots have a right to those absentee ballots. And you're taking away their right to vote and you use that on a silent election.
Right.
Well, I, I think it's either/or. So either you have the absentee ballots and then you're going to be waiting until March or you don't have the absentee ballots and you're, you can have an election in February. Like I said, I'm absolutely-
You can have an, at this point in time, if you've been making it, there is, there is time to have an election in February.
It would be the end of February, as soon as, right?
Yep, that's right.
With absentee ballots, okay. All right.
That's the point.
So, I just have a-
But we are going to put that, we are going to make it a little bit tight on this election's budget.
Hopefully.
And if that happened, there is, there is other ways to get the money for that too.
That's right. That's right. We've all learned how you can take money from one place and give it to different budgets when it has to go in.
Money can be moved.
That's right.
Sometimes within, it can be moved within budgets and it can, there's also a fund in town that can make up a few thousand dollars if necessary.
That's right.
Christine, may I just ask, do you know what it would cost to just, to do it without having actual ballots and just to pay the ballots? That's significantly cheaper, correct?
It's a lot cheaper.
Yes.
Because you put it on the machine. The only thing that's going to cost you more is payroll. That's what payroll concerns me because people are going to have to call them at the end of the night and put them in the lots.
I know I've done it. I've got the chance. I know it's expensive.
And how do the people that want to vote with absentee ballots vote? Are you going to exclude them?
No, I, I agree with you, Royce. We have to do paper ballots. You have to give the 30 days, you have to do the 45 days, you have to do the 10-day hearing before that. So you're going to be having a hearing, if you're having, you're going to be having a hearing in the beginning of January, right after the holidays.
We had planned on that anyway. We had planned for two informational meetings in January.
But we have to have a legal hearing, not meeting, a hearing.
Right.
That means you've got to get that up to the people within the next week or two. Truly. Because you've got the holidays and all that stuff. If the dates, you've got to get the dates together, you'd have to do all that stuff. You know, Royce can make a motion if he wants to make a motion.
I'll go door-to-door, you know?
Yeah, I'm absolutely willing to go door-to-door.
Yeah, so we'll volunteer. We'll go door-to-door.
I'm not making a motion on that.
I'm not making a motion on it tonight.
Not at tonight's meeting. This information needs to be updated.
Okay. All right, so we can just, all right. We need John, poor John Bozak's been here with his budget meeting.
That's right. We can't let the business-
We've got to go watch his budget meeting for the time being, I guess, and we'll get back to that because-
Be flexible if you want to.
Good. No answer.
Well, I think our previous motion that we did, I guess, because I made a motion that we still do it in May, the second, and I mean, I, I think we need to vote on that motion first and if we change it, we're going to have to change it because we didn't make the motion.
Well, you can retract your motion until further discussion too.
Right.
Oh, we're here. Made a motion for the same date as the election, Paul seconded, so there was no, all in favor. I don't know how you go about that.
Was there a vote taken?
No, there was not a vote taken.
There was a second.
We just had a first and a second, but we never took a vote.
But they retract your motion.
So I guess I'll just retract the motion until further discussion. All right.
So we're back to budgets.
Back to budgets. Conservation, okay.
Does John have one of these spreadsheet?
I don't have one.
Would you like one?
Sure.
You got it?
You can't have fun without bringing it up for the whole class.
Come on, sorry.
I love my pie.
Okay, here we go. This is the teen bill budget.
It's small, but I have a question about it too.
Sure.
So the conservation commission for the next budget year, initially we sent in requests for the same amount that we've had for the past two years, $500. Do you want me to break that down as to how we would propose spending that?
Sure.
Roughly divided into thirds, one for printing brochures and possibly trail maps, one for signage for a couple of activities, Lebanon Festival, and then next year is the 250th celebration of the town. We, you know, we may need some signage for conservation commission there. And then we also anticipate guest speaker fees taking up about a third of that amount. Since I sent that in, some members of the commission proposed a small increase, whether you want to consider this or not. Someone mentioned that it might be a good thing to send a student from town who's maybe a noble to conservation camp at Bryant Ponds and that would be another $150. So if the board would consider adding $150 to $500.
John, would that be helping you guys out all of the summer or something? Is that what's going on?
No, it's actually an educational program where they-
Just how further somebody's education.
Right, it's an education program. My daughter went there when she was in high school, yeah.
Would you put it in outside services?
I'm sorry?
Would you put it in outside services?
I guess that it could fit there.
Yeah.
So that's our complex budget.
So your budget would be $650?
If, if it's acceptable, yeah.
Oh, I think that's a great thing. How would you choose?
I guess we would ask for folks to nominate or either, we haven't really thought that process out yet, but either have an application form available and just review those applications and make a decision.
Would you first ask for someone from Lebanon, from town?
Yeah, it should be, we're, we're thinking of someone from town.
Okay.
There's got to be a deserving student from town.
Yeah, I mean, this is from our town, I think it should, I mean, if, if you had an applicant from town first and then if you didn't, then second to, you know, the other two towns that go to Noble, I mean.
There's a woman at Noble, Andrea Proberg, who is one of the organizers for the, this kind of activity, so I talked with her before we made any decisions.
And do you know what they do? I mean, what do they, what is that? I mean, what do they, what is that?
I think it's a several-day camp, and I myself don't know exactly what the activities would be, but it might be focused on water, shed management, it might be focused on, uh, evasive plants, it might be focused on a variety of things. But I think it would give students a good...
Oh, absolutely.
Background and be a good practical scholarship for them.
That's it?
That's it.
Well, that was...
Painters?
Yeah, I have no problem with increasing it to a hundred and fifty to cover that.
I'll do with that.
Yeah, so your total budget would be six fifty?
Okay.
Well, that's all.
It's all right.
Thank you for your patience.
Interesting to hear what else is going on.
Thank you, John. Have a good night.
Yep, see you Sunday.
Yep, okay. Um, so our next thing is to schedule firing EMS CEO budgets and reviews. Sue, do you have a schedule? I'm gonna grab a calendar.
So I sent an email out for, um, next Thursday for that trains meeting.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll have to wait, but I put it out there for six o'clock to see if the same group can meet at six, so if you wanna do something after, I don't know how long that's gonna take.
Is that the date that's in conflict with planning board?
No, not until, they're not in conflict till the fourth of, I mean, the fifth of, um...
January.
January, so right now I have, so that should be by itself anyway.
Yeah.
What's the date on that, Sue?
For what?
For the trains meeting?
Well, I don't know yet.
Oh, okay, I thought you just said she scheduled it. I'm sorry, I thought she said she scheduled it.
I'm trying to put it together.
Okay.
So I'm waiting to hear from everybody, I sent an email. Um, so I don't know how long you think that'll be, will it be an hour, half hour?
Probably longer than that.
An hour, probably, I think, an hour.
I would suggest that be put on until January anyway.
You want it after the New Year, I'd kinda like it before.
Yeah.
The New Year party.
So do you...
I think one of the officers already replied that they couldn't, that they were having problems stating...
He couldn't come this week.
Busy through the New Year?
I think he can come maybe next week. It was this week that they were all having the conflict.
Well, the least you can do is try.
Um, I mean, so beyond that, do you want...
We're not that far from the New Year, sorry, Sue.
Do you want to try to schedule somebody in at seven that night for budget or not? Do you want to wait until go to the fifth of, because the second is also a holiday. May I ask how many budgets you've left for you?
Um, but three.
Just three left?
No, they've only done three.
Well, they did mine, too.
Oh, so four, because yours was two.
We've done a few, yeah.
Four.
Because I, I just wanna make my calendar work for the budget, for the budget meeting, so...
We should, we can get the ones we've done, too, and give them off to you.
Yeah, okay.
I'll have Jordan...
We could do one meeting with a whole little one, so I can start, do that for the first meeting.
I'll give those to Jordan to get to you.
Okay, great, thank you. Do you want me to see if Dan will, because Dan's coming for that meeting, so if you wanna do firing EMS at seven that night?
Yeah, we could, you guys can...
Or whenever this other meeting gets over.
Because that's gonna be a longer one anyway, so if Dan's already here, we can just keep him and try to do him right after. That way he's done, I mean, that's gonna be a longer one.
Okay.
I, um, I have, um...
I wouldn't suggest you want to wait, you have the ones the same night.
No, that would be enough, yeah. And then, um, I don't know if you wanna do the CEO budget the same night, you're gonna be in here with the planning board, I don't know, I don't know what you wanna do.
He's gonna tell seven, planning board will be here. We can always, um, we should, we should try to get it done, um... I'm just trying to think of where we can sit that it's big enough for us to be...
Well, how many people, it's gonna be you four, you three plus the CEO for the budget, right?
Well, unless other people wanna come in, they can come in, I mean, it's open to the public, it's still a meeting.
Right, but you can only have so many people in these hours.
That's why I'm trying to...
Believe the number's seven over there.
Yeah. God, I don't want more than seven people in there.
Yeah.
Well, we could try it.
Unless you wanna do it on Wednesday, although he's not in on Wednesday.
No, he's not. You guys are closed on Wednesday, so, um...
You wanna try it? To CEO the following Thursday?
Yeah, yeah, okay, we'll try it.
Good time.
Well, let's try it at six, and we'll just have to sit somewhere in between here.
CEO for what date?
Budget.
The fifth.
Fifth? Thank you. Six P.M., right? And you're gonna do firing EMS whichever night you decide to do trains, is that correct?
We're gonna try to do it next Thursday, yes.
Okay, thank you.
After we do the trains.
Trains are open meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a few things to, um, ask you about here. Yeah, that's what I'm gonna, I got a couple of things to ask you about if you don't mind. Sue, okay, so, um, the MetriCast Cable franchise?
Yes.
Who is due to be signed on the fifteenth or due to at least have a decision made on it, or is one way or the other on the fifteenth? Where are we standing with that at the time?
I called Mary, um, at the lawyer's office.
Who's Mary?
Mary's the lawyer, I called her again today, and I'm waiting to hear back from her, I've called her twice. So I'll touch base again with her tomorrow morning and hopefully she'll get back to me, because I, I need a clarification between the contract and the franchise, because what I got from her was the franchise is by state law, and I, that's all I got, so I need to really have a conversation with her and have her C.C. review, Royce, because you asked me to do that, but I haven't had a chance of, she hasn't, I haven't gotten back to her, I don't know, she was out of the office last week, she was in today, but all I get was a voicemail again.
So you're looking to, I just wanna clarify, you're looking to find out if you can sign for another ten years, or, and then have a discussion publicly whether or not the town wants to sign for another ten years?
Well, I think it would be, um, you know, our decision of going through that, but yeah, I need a clarification on the franchise and the contract and what that means first, and then we can have our discussion on it, so that's what I was trying to do.
Okay, so with that in mind, MetriCast Cable gave us a check for four thousand dollars to purchase equipment or to use in rewiring this town office for, uh, for videotaping of meetings, so I'm wondering where we're standing on that now. I have heard nothing as far as proposals, getting ready to put anything out to bid, asking for requir, I've heard nothing, and we've had that check for almost, what, three weeks now, two or three weeks?
We've had it for two weeks, I think.
Two weeks, yeah.
We have it, and I'm hoping that we will get to it after the holidays, and I need to talk to, we need to sit down, talk to Mike, um, CEO, because I know he had some involvement, and he has it in Milton, so he can help us get, um, get it correct, because it's not just the four thousand, it's gonna cost us a lot more than four thousand.
It's gonna cost us six thousand and change just for the proposal, right?
We need to figure out where we're gonna take that money from to do that. I mean, I know that three or four years ago, I had that in my file, too, that we voted on it.
That's correct.
We voted on it not to exceed five hundred dollars. That's what that said.
Yeah, but that was just, that was specifically for equipment.
Yes, but that's, oh, I'm sorry.
That was also deemed an illegal vote by town council at the time, so just to throw that on the table.
Oh, was it? See, I didn't know that either, thank you.
So, but where did that money go then?
It was never reason appropriated, because, no, because your tax commitment comes after the vote.
Right.
So it was deemed illegal, so it was not...
Prior to the commitment? Hmm, interesting, so there is no money that has been set aside for that?
Not the five hundred, no.
Hmm, interesting. So apparently now we also have to raise the money for the video equipment, and as well as for the two thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars above and beyond the check that it would cost us to wire the town office?
Probably, I don't know, Mike knows more about that than I do, he's been working on it, so we'd have to have, talk to him about that, yeah.
Okay, can we, can we, uh, schedule some time to talk about that, like when you might think you might have heard by the lawyer?
Probably after the New Year, once we get through this stuff and we get our budgets all accomplished, I think that's our priority now, is our budgets and the moratorium and all that stuff, and then we'll get going on that.
So do I call in and ask for budget, for, for agenda time on that, or do we wanna schedule it now?
So I don't wanna schedule it now.
Okay.
I wanna get through budgets first, and then we can look at that.
Okay, so, um, uh, the other thing I had to ask you is a resident's, uh, question, somebody had written in to me, they said they've been having a problem, they've been asking for a new street sign on Knox Lane, uh, Knox Road, uh, over off of River Road, and they said that the sign disappeared in September, and they have, have been calling in, I guess, a couple of times, requesting...
I know nothing about it, and I can't, I don't, I know nothing about it, I can mention it to Tommy and ask him if he knows anything about it, but that's all I can, not a road commissioner.
Well, can we, uh, ask him to find out about that? Because as far as I know, and Ben will correct me on this, but I know that we used to have, Tommy used to come in and ask regularly for updated street signs. As far as I knew, the state police used to actually request...
No, we wore our own street signs and purchase order.
I understand that. If I could get the rest of my sentence out, the state police used to request that the roads be labeled with street signs. Did I remember seeing that, that they used to call him and tell him that there were street signs missing, and then he'd come in here with purchase order for them?
Residents would tell us when they lost a street sign, but I mean, you could put a street sign up one day and it disappears the next day.
No, the states didn't come in, Tommy came in with purchase orders saying that the state police requested that he replace the street sign. I could actually pull the purchase orders with right to know if I have to, I guess, but, you know, I know, it's really bothersome to get a street sign, but...
Just to set the record straight, that's Knox Lane that you...
Knox Lane, I didn't know if it was Knox Lane or Knox Road, they just said Knox. So it was a... Knox Lane, I got it, I put Knox Lane Road, because I didn't know.
That's okay.
So, I'm throwing it at you.
Sorry, Maggie.
I missed ya, thank you, David.
But we can ask the road commissioner if he has it on his list and if it's ordered.
They tend to change something.
Yeah, how long did, do you know how long it usually should take to replace a single street sign?
I do not, but keep in mind, sometimes those street signs, you'll put them up and they'll be down the next...
I know, I understand that, but that's why I asked, is how long it usually takes.
I don't know, he might have put it up several times, who knows?
Yeah, but we never see him, so...
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll ask him.
Is that a town-owned road or private?
Private.
I think that's a private one, and we don't, we don't provide the sign for private roads anyway.
So it's up to him to replace the street sign for Knox, well, so good, that's important to know, so it is up to the residents of Knox Lane then if it's a private road?
Do you know if you can do that for nine-one-one, Ben?
No, it's a private road, it says it's expending public funds for private purposes, illegal since nineteen seventy-seven, United States Supreme Court.
What year? So if it's a private road, the residents of the road are responsible for purchasing that?
Tommy, and he's gonna tell them, right? I mean, the list is right behind you, I can't see it from here with a private public, but, yeah, so, and it needs to be blue sign, and he'll tell them that, not a green one.
Right.
Okay, blue sign. What's the difference between blue and green, just whether or not it's a private road?
Whether it's a private road or, or a public way.
Just don't come down here, elected.
Against towns over since, in other words.
I see, okay. Okay, well, that was good to know, now I have an answer. Sue? Okay. The, uh, the final thing that I have to ask, uh, is whether or not the board would allow me to take the food off of the town office floor and deliver it to the food pantry. I'm sorry to say that, you know, it's, you know, five weeks now since Thanksgiving, and we have food sitting on the town office floor.
Sue, do you want to elaborate?
Well, if you don't mind, I will speak. I've got somebody that would like some food this week, and I'm going to take whatever I don't use to the food pantry.
Can we at least get it up off the floor, like put it up on top of a shelf or some, I mean, really? You know, I just hate coming in here, we, well, I know, but you've got people that are walking in here from the parking lot with grime, dirt, dust, everything else all over their feet, and you've got food sitting on the floor.
Well, it's in boxes and they're all packaged.
Well, I know they're in boxes, but I'm just asking if you can pick it up.
They'll be out of here in the next couple of days, so...
Sue, can I give you a little tidbit? Um, the school is actually doing a food drive right now for family, for families in need.
That would have been the other place, is I was gonna call them and find out if they wanted it there first.
Yeah, because that, that would seem, you like, it'd just be right across the way, so you wouldn't have to go too far out of your way, but I know that they've collected.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the delivery, Sue. You're welcome.
That's right. So it shouldn't be on the floor anymore after this week is, or next week, we'll say, because next week's Christmas.
It'll be done.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it for me.
Well, I guess I make a motion that we adjourn.
It's okay.
Well... Do you have some other?
No, I don't want anything.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you, are you gonna finish the marijuana?
We should, by the way, list other, other business on our agenda at the end of every list.
Or public participation, I should say. That's fine.
What happened to the times on the agenda?
I asked you not to put them, because sometimes they roll over and we move things around like we did tonight, and it's just much easier, so if the agenda's there, not to put them.
So you're not gonna put any times anymore, so nobody knows like what time you plan to start a conversation on, like for say, the marijuana, so that people know if they're gonna be able to make it here?
Yeah, well, when people are scheduled for the meeting, they know what time they're scheduled for.
But it's whether or not the public wants to attend. For example, if they knew that your marijuana was scheduled for five, they could be here at five, they don't have to show up at three o'clock for six budgets when the marijuana isn't scheduled till five.